Good evening. Welcome to the April 23 meeting of the Millis School Committee. My name is Mark Conner. I'm the chair. I'll start with attendance to my left. Denise?
Here.
Robin is out tonight. Superintendent is here. All right. Shayna?
Here.
And Sean?
Here.
All right. We do have, our teacher representative is here. No student reps tonight. Next, I'll start by announcing that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at seven o'clock on Comcast Channel Eight or Verizon Channel Thirty Seven. All meeting videos are also posted to the Millis Public Schools website under School Committee. All videos are also available on YouTube. All school committee minutes and agendas can be found on the school committee page of the Millis Public School website. Persons wishing to speak during open session must sign in before the meeting starts. Comments are not to exceed three minutes in time. Individuals may not name students, staff, or parents. All topics for discussion must be limited to those listed on this evening's agenda, and all comments must be directed to the chair. The committee may or may not respond to public comments. It shall be their decision to discuss issues at a later date. We don't have anyone signed in for open session. No student reps, so we'll go teacher rep for that. School peace.
How are you?
Right. Mr. Bigelow's senior English class visited Ms. Carlson's third graders, is visiting, sorry, tomorrow, Ms. Carlson's third graders. I think it might be their final Pem Pow meet and greet before the end of the school year. Author, Corinne Shae, visited grades one, two, three students on Monday. The students were read her book, Thank You Omo, by community members at last year's Read Across America School Day, so now they got to have the author come and visit. They had a fabulous dance assembly where they were able to show their rhythm and beats, working in groups and individuals. They used creative dance with imagery. They learned colonial and folk dance, line dance, and tinukling, which is the national dance of the Philippines. So I saw pictures. It was fabulous. Kindergarten through third grade students are working on robots with Ms. Falluzzi in technology, and the fourth and fifth grade students are finishing up projects and will be able to tackle the robots next. They would like to thank the Home and School Association for increasing the number of robots so that more kids could simultaneously work on the robots than before. Up in the middle school, they are excited that the Chamber Theater will be visiting the middle school tomorrow to perform several captivating short stories. They will include The Tale of the Tell-Tale Heart, Excerpts from the Raven, The Legend of Sleepy Hollow, The Monkey's Paw, and The Necklace. Originally, the students were supposed to go to Mechanics Hall in Worcester, but a power outage resulted in the cancellation of the trip, but they're excited that they were able to work out bringing it to us here, so that's kind of nifty.
Now, was the power outage?
Yes, not us, not us. It wasn't us. Sorry. I should have been more clear about that. We were fine. It wasn't us. We were good. The sixth grade social studies students have been taking time to celebrate Earth Day, which was Monday. They're learning about the ways that the humans impact our environment and the consequences of those impacts, and they're making pledges about what they can individually do to help. ELA students are working on mythology, primarily Greek myths. And the seventh grade Spanish immersion class is reading a book called Bananas about a young boy who grew up out of banana plantation in Costa Rica, which makes sense that it's called bananas. In eighth grade, the ELA students are reading The Giver, and they are working on developing their own utopian societies. And as history has shown us, everybody has a really good plan for their utopian society, and it always goes exactly according to plan. So they're pretty excited to see what's going to happen there. Up at the high school, the Chemclad had their solar car races this Monday, so thank you to Merritt for helping fund that. The team event was won by Amelia Staples, Taylor O'Toole, and Molly Hatch, and the solo car was run by Senior Genesis Figueroa. We had them built a while ago, but we kind of needed some sun for them to run. March was a rough solar car month for us, so that was kind of fun. This Thursday, Senior Izzy Jewett has organized the Senior Project Showcase. I think it's our third one, if I'm not mistaken. After going back in my head, it sounds about right. So in the morning, we'll have senior projects showcased in a variety of ways throughout the school building. So there'll be a poster session in the cafeteria. There'll be videos and presentations in the auditorium. There'll be things going on in the gym, and then there's sort of hands-on workshops kind of going on all over the building simultaneously, and we'll be able to use the My Flex platform to schedule all of this, so it's pretty exciting. The NHS induction is next week on Tuesday, so there are twenty-five students being inducted this year in a ceremony led by the senior officers. We have the JED Foundation's sort of follow-up survey happening in our advisory next Monday. So it will be a survey where students will comment on well-being challenges they face and how they feel their sources of support are in the building for them. Additionally, coming up, we have, as part of our Mills Public Schools speaker series, we have Caleb Joseph, who's the founder of the Self-Help Tour, coming. So he'll be doing a presentation to the students, the high school students, in the morning, and then there'll be a parent presentation in the evening. So he'll be able to visit us with a generous grant from the Kyle Carres Foundation, so we're excited to have him coming in. Right before break, for anybody who got to go, was the Fabulous Art of the Nights between the art show in the cafeteria and the Soul and Ensemble Concert in the auditorium. It was fabulous. There was even a fun little slideshow of staff artwork happening. So thank you to Amy Radcliffe and Jim Poulos for the visual arts component, and Janice Norton and Mark Femenow for the performing arts. Let's see. We, oh, sorry. This one was kind of a last-minute addition. I didn't get to pervert it. So the senior class is thanking all the parents who have purchased "Congratulations 2024" senior lawn signs, so those should be going into the yards around town, something positive to look forward to. And looking down the road, we've got AP exams coming up. We've got senior project presentations at the Rich Brothers Room on May twentieth through twenty-fourth. We've got the Rolling Rally and Bonfire on May thirty-first, Class Day on June fifth, and Senior Banquet. And of course, we're excited to see all of you at graduation on June sixth. And finally, we have a very exciting event happening this Friday, so the Special Olympics are coming to Millis. The event has been organized through Neely and Ally Sears at the high school. We've got about fifty student volunteers helping out. The athletes will be welcomed with a gauntlet of students in front of the building between nine and nine-thirty, which is super exciting. The band and the chorus will be playing at the opening ceremonies, and all of these wonderful Special Olympians from, I believe it's the five schools. Is that correct, Bob?
Yeah.
Yep. Will be able to have the opportunity to compete in what's a great event every year. We haven't hosted since I've been here, have we?
We have not. We have not. Yeah. And fortunately, the sun's going to be out because we're doing it all out on the football field, so we're really, it looks like it's going to be a perfect day.
It does. It's such a positive, like, it's been such a positive buzz.
It's been out since January.
Between that and June sixth, those are your two big ones, right? You got, keep the weather good. So that is all the exciting things going on. Any questions? Excellent.
For people who might be coming to the building on Friday.
Oh, yes.
Parking is going to be non-existent. We're moving things around so we can, the families of the athletes can park around the building, so we've got a whole parking situation, and it'll be after the buses come to drop all the kids off, and everyone will be gone before the buses come to take the kids home, so.
So don't drive on Friday.
If you can, students, if you can walk.
Carpool?
You know, take your bicycle. That would be helpful.
Is, what, you said five towns?
Five.
Right. So it's Medway, Ashland, Holliston, I think Hockington and Millis.
Okay.
So five towns met together, and we do it every year, and it kind of rotates around. Because our facilities are kind of small, we haven't hosted, but we really wanted to host so that we said, well, we'll do it out on the football field and have a bunch of tents and everything, so we're excited to have it.
Very exciting.
It's going to be a lovely day. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Hello. My name is Riley Dunn. I'm one of the two school counselors here at the high school, along with Nicole Moore, who did help me with this report and presentation. And tonight, I'm going to talk about the class of 2023 and kind of a profile of their placement in terms of college admissions and where they all went off to, but also their testing with SATs and ACTs a little bit, and also AP scores for all the students who took AP exams in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So this is the class that graduated last June. Before I fully dive in to the class of 2023, to the past, I wanted to give a quick update on some of the things that we have going on at the high school right now and some of the things that we've done so far this year in the counseling department. And this is mainly Nicole Moore and I as school counselors, but the things that I mentioned that we do that are kind of major mental health focus, we do in collaboration with Olivia Zatoli and Erin Sullivan, the school adjustment counselors. But the way we explain it to the kids in terms of the differences between school counselors and school adjustment counselors is that the school adjustment counselors don't get to do all the fun stuff like scheduling, academic planning, college admissions, and career exploration, so.
College recommendations.
Yeah, college recommendations, AP exam planning. So anyway, so some of these things we do do in collaboration with the adjustment counselors. So at this point, Nicole and I have completed two rounds of freshman seminars. We do three rounds total with the freshmen. The first one's really, you know, acclimating to high school, talking about the differences between high school and middle school, making, you know, plans and thinking about how to make the most out of high school, understanding GPA and transcript, understanding clubs and sports and the value of those things, and the reasons why, you know, we do things like community service and getting involved in our community beyond, you know, it just looking good on a resume. And then round three, we'll talk more about study skills and preparing for those final exams because those will be new to freshmen as they didn't have final exams in middle school. We also completed our tenth and eleventh grade seminars. Tenth grade seminars are focused on career exploration. Each student does an inventory, and then we talk about all of the things that, you know, a person should think about before choosing a career. And then juniors, we are diving right into the college application process with them and getting the ball rolling with them. And in line with that, we had our Junior Parent College Planning Night in February, and we had a panel of admissions counselors from UMass Amherst, Boston College, Mas Bay, and Suffolk University there to talk about the college admissions from their perspective, which is always an awesome night. It's, it's nice to do it in a small community, and the library's awesome. They let us use their space, and it really is a nice night where we go over a ton of information, and the reps go over a ton of information, and the parents are able to jump right in and ask questions. So it's one that, you know, we get great feedback on, and we hope that we continue to get awesome participation from our families in that moving forward. We had our college mini fair at March first at Medway High School, and we had about seventy colleges at that fair, and it's nice because it's only available for, it's only open for Medway High School students and Millis High School students. So we work with the Medway counselors to plan that for forty-five minutes. It's just Millis High School students in there, and they're able to walk right up to all the college reps, ask questions, help the college reps to put a face to a name, because again, they know they're only talking to Millis kids for those forty-five minutes, so it's not as if the Millis kids get lost in the shuffle of a huge college fair at the Boston Convention Center. So that was also a hit and a nice opportunity for our juniors to learn about colleges as they start this college application process. We had our eighth to ninth grade step-up night, April third, as we begin the process of welcoming the class of 2028 to the high school. And we've got them all, you know, we talked to them about course registration, so at this point, we have worked with those teachers and the eighth grade students to get all of those students' course requests for next year into the system. We've done the Signs of Suicide program with our ninth graders in health classes, and that's a program where we teach the kids, you know, how to look out for themselves and how to reach out for themselves or a friend if they're struggling or, you know, if they need support. And so it's informational for them. We also include a screener for every freshman student, and always what comes from that is, you know, it opens up the opportunity for them to reach out. And so we often get that from, you know, those conversations, which we're happy about because we want them to know that we're here to help them, and they, they're safe to ask us for that help. So that program, you know, we've been doing it for years, but we're grateful to be continuing to do the SOS program. We're on our third year of working with the JED Foundation, so Stephanie mentioned that we'll be doing a big student survey, and that's really kind of the final wrap-up of our work with JED in terms of this process of helping us to identify what our strengths are in terms of how we offer, how we support student mental health. And then also, they helped us to identify some things that we could improve on. And last year, we did a ton of work putting a ton of things in place and improving our mental health supports in a million different ways. We had a huge committee of staff members. It wasn't just the counselors. It was the superintendent, Spanish teachers, math teachers, everybody coming together to work on this committee and put a ton of things in place that have improved our, you know, mental health supports and that really are just part of the culture here now, and so our work this last year is kind of wrapping up, identifying how much we've helped and how to then continue everything that we've put into place so far, how to make sure that we keep it going moving forward. And then Samaritans came in and provided suicide prevention content to our tenth and eleventh graders again, kind of opening up those conversations and making sure that at every level, students are hearing us that, you know, their mental health matters. It's okay not to be okay, and we're here to help them if they're not feeling okay. We're all done with course selection for the middle school and high school, so the eighth graders and then all of the high school students, we meet with them in groups to go over the course selection process. You know, we walk the teachers through it on their ends, although they're pros at this point, and then we meet individually with all the students to make sure that each individual student has their correct courses for next year requested in the system. So that's all good to go. Now, Principal Attic, he just has to spend his summer putting it together, putting the master schedule together for next year. Local scholarship applications have been completed by seniors. They were due this past weekend, and we did bring in over fifty colleges into our conference room to meet with students in the fall about, you know, it's an opportunity for students to learn about different colleges from admissions reps who are likely to be reading their applications. But kind of in the spring, Nicole Moore has taken it on to bring in some different trade programs and inviting, making sure we're identifying students who that might be a good fit for, that might be just interested in hearing about it. So we've had an awesome group of students so far in the automotive trade program presentation that we had yesterday. Today, we had cosmetology, a cosmetology program here. We had an electrical apprenticeship program in before break, and we have HVAC coming in soon, and also a cool historical preservation trades program that connects students with internships at historical preservation sites all over the country, so that one's coming up as well. Yeah, and interestingly, we definitely have a group of our current seniors who are still figuring this stuff out, so they've definitely jumped on and been interested in those things. All right, so back to last year's class. Graduating class of 2023. There were seventy graduates in the class of 2023. And just to kind of paint a quick picture of what their four years looked like, the pandemic, so they started their high school experience under normal circumstances, and probably just as they were getting the swing of things, in March of their freshman year is when the pandemic hit. And so that rest of freshman year was more or less a wash, as we all know. And then their sophomore year was remote learning, hybrid learning, masks, definitely not typical year in any sense. We're still in masks for their, their junior year, and then their senior year thankfully was able to be more or less normal. In terms of their ability to access the SAT or the ACT, the previous classes, the pandemic greatly impacted their ability to access those tests, but this class was able to access the test kind of just like students before the pandemic were able to. But as a result of the test not being available to the two previous classes, almost every college went test optional, meaning that they are not requiring SATs or ACT scores as part of the college application, and they remained test optional for the class of 2023. So the test was available, but the pressure was off in terms of the need to get an outstanding score or a certain score to get into the colleges that they're interested in. The message that we sent to them was, we encouraged them to take the SAT, do, you know, prepare and do the best they can on it. But yes, there's this nice decreased pressure because if those scores do not end up being a good reflection of you as a student, there's a ton of incredible schools out there that you can still get into, and they don't need to see, nobody needs to know about that test score. So AP exam conditions were also kind of normal for this class. They were normal for the previous class as well, although one change was that some of the exams moved to digital exams rather than paper and pencil for this class. So US History, AP Lit, AP Lang, and Computer Science were digital, but that was kind of a planned change. You know, the result, the, the college board made those tests more or less the same thing as a paper and pencil test, so I expect that more of them will be moving to digital moving forward. This is a list of some of our class of 2023 acceptances. We definitely saw that our kids got into some really, really incredible schools. The SAT optional piece makes it all very unpredictable. And kind of we see it in both directions, where we have students who didn't submit their test scores, and because they didn't submit their test scores, they were able to get into some amazing schools that they may not have had those test scores been required. And then it just also, because it throws kind of a wrench in the, in the system, some schools that we would think are a lock for a student are no longer that, and it's just far more unpredictable. So a little bit, you know, harder to counsel them on and for them to plan for, but the results, I think overall, these kids got into some really incredible schools, and in the final couple pages of the paper, the full report, you can see everywhere that they applied and the number of acceptances that we got, and then where, how many students kind of went to each of these schools if they ended up actually enrolling. But these are the schools that they were accepted to.
Now, we should cut this slide and send it to the former college president. Are you pleased with your selection of pictures on the top of the slide?
That's fair. That's fair. Yeah, well, he wasn't the only one I was thinking about. Yeah, I almost invited him tonight.
You know, it's, you know, you've heard that it's his favorite presentation of the entire year.
Yes.
Probably watching at home.
Yes, that's right.
All right, so in terms of, you know, ending up going to colleges, eighty-six percent of this class went to four-year colleges, which is the twentieth straight year that over seventy-four percent attended a four-year college. Eighty-nine percent total planned to continue formal education, so we think had one student going to a two-year school and then one student going to a trade school. And can, sort of in line and on trend with how things have been in previous years. We did have six students entering the workforce, which I know we've sort of talked about in previous years in terms of like it'd be helpful or nice to be able to say what those six students were doing, but because of privacy reasons, I can't. But I will say, we definitely had everything, you know, in the range of students who, you know, could have gone to any college, you know, that they wanted to, but were making a choice instead just to take some time to work and figure it out. I feel like we've had a few more of those than in previous years, which I would attribute to the price tag at, you know, colleges in addition to maybe, you know, some of the past few years and them being different. But I think because of the price tag, I think it's just encouraging, or some of our kids and their families are kind of having more of a conversation of if you don't know exactly what your plan is, it's okay to take a few years to figure that out, and you don't necessarily just have to enroll because you feel like it's what the majority of students are doing. And then we do have, did have two students undecided at graduation, and I learned that today, actually, that one of them ended up attending a trade school. So that is it in the numbers because I just learned it today, but, and the other student is still undecided. All right, so, and this is just kind of a five-year comparison of students enrolling in four-year schools, two-year schools, and the total continuing education numbers, so you can see that it's, you know, we're kind of on trend and doing more of the same as we have in previous years. In terms of geographical placement, sixty-eight percent of the class of, oh, sorry, sixty-six percent of the class of 2023 attended, ended up going to colleges in New England. And then the other states that students ended up going to were New York, Pennsylvania, Maryland, Delaware, Michigan, Florida, North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia. So this class chose to stay mostly on the East Coast with one student going to Michigan. But yeah, it kind of varies by class, but is similar to previous classes. A majority of students stay in New England. And for the SAT, so this was the seventh class to take the redesigned SAT. It was redesigned in two thousand seventeen. It's just two sections, the evidence-based reading and writing, and the math section. The essay is no longer as of two, twenty-twenty-one, and the total score is out of sixteen hundred. So access to the SAT has been very different over the past few years. The last class that I would say was normal was the class of twenty-twenty because by the time the pandemic hit, they were all done with their SATs. So ninety-one percent of that class participated in the SAT. And then pandemic hit. It impacted SAT access big time, and a very small percentage of our students accessed the, the SAT. So our averages for that year were very high because, of course, the students that are going to make sure they find a way to take that SAT are the ones who are confident that they're going to do well on it. And then with the class of twenty-twenty-two, things were still kind of weird with the pandemic. We weren't sure about access, so we took advantage of the opportunity to give an in-school during the school day SAT to any students who wanted to take it. So we had eighty-three percent of that class participate in the SAT. And then for the class of twenty-twenty-three, things kind of went just back to normal. No in-school SAT, so just go on and take it on your own at an area high school if you want to. No pressure to take it necessarily, but we do encourage them all to take it. And we saw seventy-nine percent of this class ended up taking it. So not quite as many as that percentage before the pandemic, but I'd say kind of getting closer to it, especially considering that only fifty, seven percent of Massachusetts high school graduates took the SAT in twenty-twenty-three, for the class of twenty-twenty-three, where that number was closer to eighty percent before the pandemic. So Millis students, I think, are, we're giving them the message that we think they should take it. There's no downside to taking it. So for the most part, they're listening to us, and it is very nice that for those students who, it will just throw a wrench in their year if they have to take it, or they just are absolutely certain that it's not going to be a good reflection of their student, their, themselves of a student, they don't have to take it, but most of our students are taking it. And for this class, the mean score was eleven eighty-five, which was an increase from the previous class. It was above the Massachusetts mean and above the national mean, and it actually was the second highest mean score that we've had since the exam changed in twenty-seventeen, and that's the second only to that anomaly class where a very small percentage takes it. And typically, if a smaller percentage of students takes it, again, And typically, if a smaller percentage of students takes it, again, it's because those students are the stronger test takers. So your averages are higher. So our averages for this class, our mean scores are higher. And they're higher also compared to Massachusetts and the nation's scores, even though our percentage is larger. So this was, I would say, a strong SAT year, not only because there's, you know, seven less students taking it this year than before the pandemic, but I think overall, it just seems like this was a strong group. We were above the Massachusetts mean for, and the national mean for both evidence-based reading and writing as well as for math. Yeah, so again, you might expect, one might expect that because our percentages of students that took it were higher than the Massachusetts and national groups. We wouldn't be necessarily, but this is definitely a strong group of SAT scores. Just to show you a graph of the four-year trend. Again, in twenty twenty-one, you kind of see that bump in scores because of the small number of students taking it. And then things kind of returns to typical for twenty twenty-two. And then there's a definite jump from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three for both evidence-based reading and writing and for math. And to help us kind of put these in perspective, there is a tool called the DART comparison where we are compared to eleven-like schools that are similar to us on different demographic reasons, for different demographic reasons. And one of the schools this year was Attleboro Virtual Academy, which doesn't have enough students to actually compare to, so it ends up only being ten schools total. But compared to those ten schools, we had the second highest overall SAT score. We had the highest evidence-based reading and writing score and we had the third highest math score. And just to show you kind of a graph of where all the scores fell. Again, we were the second highest, which is pretty solid for us for, for Dart comparisons. And again, it's the, we were the highest for evidence-based reading and writing. So the ACT is the other college entrance exam. Before the pandemic, we got up to about twenty-four percent of our students taking the ACT. And during the pandemic, it dropped to three percent of students taking it and it hasn't really bounced back again. I think with this de-emphasis on test scores, students are choosing to take one, but not put too much energy into it. So they're not doing what they used to, which is take, you know, playing, trying to play every card right and making sure you're taking both tests and then seeing how you did on both and then choosing which one of those you're gonna take again. Instead, most of our students are just choosing to focus on the SAT. So only eight percent of students, sorry, only three percent of Milis students took the exam. And that's similar to the, all of Massachusetts, only eight percent took the ACT. And because of fewer than five students taking the ACT, we don't have any data to look at. It's in that report, but it's just not really worth spending too much time on because the information doesn't mean much when it's only, you know, two or three kids that took the test.
One kid is twenty percent of you.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, so that's the ACTs. For AP exams, of course, AP, AP exams are, you know, four-hour tests that students take after a year of preparation in an AP course, which is a very challenging, very rigorous college-level course. These are run by the college board. We had thirteen different AP exams taken during the last school year, which was the same as the previous year. Approximately eighty percent of the graduating class of twenty twenty-three participated in the AP program by taking one or more exams. And this was an increase from the class of twenty twenty-two. And I'll show you a graph in a minute that we kind of are tending to increase our participation in AP exams over time, which is, I think, a positive thing for our school. We also are able to encourage all students to take AP exams and allow, you know, pretty much any student who wants to take an AP exam, we encourage them to take the NAP exam. We sort of have prerequisite guidelines for students in, when they're considering taking an AP exam. But generally speaking, if a student really wants to and is willing to put in the work, they can take in, take an AP exam. And we recognize that even if, you know, it doesn't end up being the five for them, they will learn from it. They will gain skills from it and they will be more better prepared to handle those courses when they come to college. Or, you know, building other skills as well that will help them in whatever careers that they choose. So that's not how all schools look or handle APs because not all schools are able to for different reasons. But we're grateful here to be able to have that policy and be able to support students in choosing to take AP exams if they want to. And kind of the rest of the information I'm talking about is not just about the class of twenty twenty-three, but this is talking about all of the exams taken during the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which were taken by seniors in the class of twenty twenty-three, juniors in the class of twenty twenty-four and sophomores in the class of twenty twenty-five. So I'm no longer just talking about the class of twenty twenty-three.
Because generally, there's one AP course, human geography, that's generally open to sophomores.
Yes.
And then the rest are generally juniors and seniors.
Yes.
But yeah, so they get that first exposure potentially in sophomore year.
Yes, and this year we actually opened up AP Biology as well to some sophomores. So for this group, sixty-five percent of all AP, of all exams taken earned a three or higher, which was down from the previous class. And I'm sorry, and a passing score is a three on an AP exam. And it's the highest possible score is a five. Forty percent of all the exams scored a four or better, which again was down a bit from the previous year. And then eighteen percent scored a five, the highest possible score, which was in line with the previous year at eighteen percent. Overall, a hundred and ninety-seven exams were taken by a hundred and one, a hundred and twenty-one students compared to the previous year of one hundred and eighty-five exams taken by a hundred and sixteen students. And again, just to show you kind of the trends, so, so more of our students are participating in AP exams. This graph shows you the number of students taking exams, but of course, a student could possibly take more than one. So the total number of exams is a hundred and ninety-seven. So more of our students are taking AP exams. This year, the scores were a little bit lower. Fewer students earning a three or higher. Yeah, and a few other ways that we are gonna look at the data, the scores are a bit lower for this group of students than in previous years.
It's kind of interesting that SAT scores were higher than usual and the AP scores were lower than usual.
Yes, so I did, I think it's in a few slides, but no, but I can, I can talk about it now. So I did, I was puzzled by that because it was not just higher, like, yeah, our SAT scores were so strong and then our AP scores are just not quite as strong. And so I pulled it out by class, by grade. And of the one hundred and ninety-seven exams taken, seventeen were taken by sophomores, eighty-four were taken by juniors and ninety-two were taken by seniors and the seniors of that class of twenty twenty-three. And I'm very annoyed with myself for not putting the means on here. But the means for sophomores were very strong, which makes sense because, again, the sophomores that are choosing to take APs are going to be very strong students, okay? So they have the highest mean scores. Seniors also pretty solid mean scores, which is in line with this group's SAT scores. The juniors had lower scores for the AP exams. So naturally, I looked at this juniors who are now seniors, we have their SAT scores now. And their SAT scores, so these are the current seniors, are actually much lower. So I'm now very interested in diving into this more. It could say something about, you know, when the, the pandemic hit. You know, the current seniors, they were in eighth grade. You know, they were just, for the first time, gonna be not getting standards-based report cards. You know, part of the plan was that, in the, in the second half of eighth grade, they were gonna be switching to regular grades, but they never got that opportunity. And then their entire freshman year was madness or just completely irregular in terms of grading and just expectations and all of that. So, but there's a ton of things at play, you know, for these grades. I've talked to teachers who have students in this class and they've been through a lot. And so it's hard to know what, what impacts these different grades, but it'll definitely be part of the conversation in terms of all the things that could play a role in these test scores. And I don't know.
And I would say that, you know, for the, the total group, sixty-five percent getting a three or above is, is still, it's,
Totally, yeah.
Right, it's, it's not something that, you know, you have to stop everything.
Yeah, totally, absolutely, absolutely, yeah, it's just, it's just a small, small dip. Yeah, so we were higher than the global and state mean grades in six of the ten exams taken that were culmination of classes physically taught at the high school. Because we do have some classes that students take online through virtual high school or the tech education cooperative. So some are taken online. Of the ones that were taken in person, six out of ten were higher than the global and state means. Six out of the ten had mean grades that were three or above. And so, yeah, a majority of our exams are getting that three or above ma- mean. And this is just a comparison of black is Milis, gray is Massachusetts and white is global for the different classes that are physically taught here at the high school. So you can see that we are above the Massachusetts and global mean for several of the exams.
So the courses on the left are the ones physically taught here?
Yes.
And so we had three, so we said kids took thirteen exam, AP exams last year? So three of those were because of our virtual learning options.
Correct.
That kids were able to take. This list and those three, did not exist ten years ago when we were trying to get kids more opportunities. Just gonna dovetail this. The override will help sustain this stuff. All, everything that we're seeing so far is all the work that's put in at Clyde Brown, that's brought into the middle school in terms of tiers of support, that then gets us to the high school, gets us kids who excel academically in all of these, including taking multiple college courses over the last three years of their high school career. There's numerous kids every year who are walking out of here with four, five AP courses that they've gotten threes or better on to go to school. And it's all because of the level of support we're able to give and the opportunities that we're able to provide in virtual learning and having AP courses available. Those all come at risk if we don't, if the override does not pass in a couple of weeks.
Yes, and you mentioned it, but thirty percent of the overall AP exam group were named AP Scholars. Sorry, and AP Scholars are students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more exams. And this is just for this current year or of last year. And then fourteen were AP Scholars with distinction, which are students who receive an average score of at least three point five on all exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. Nine seniors earned an AP Scholar with honors, which is an average score of at least three point two five on all AP exams and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. And I think I mentioned it earlier, but yeah, eighty percent of the class of twenty twenty-three took an AP course. Like that is pretty awesome, that, that many, such a large percentage are taking college-level courses while they're in high school. And then, yeah, again, they compare us to Dart schools to kind of give us a sense of how this data looks compared to these schools that are comparable to us on different demographic things. So this is where we fell compared to the Dart schools, but like Bob said, like the differences are, are small differences with many of these schools. We're not far behind them.
It's venture, it's that eighty percent of the schools on that top list, they don't have eighty percent participation.
Right, they probably don't have as many, they, yeah, they may, also something that can affect this is whether we require all students who take an AP course, you must take the exam, it's not optional. Lots of high schools don't do that. It's up to you whether you wanna take the exam at the end of the year. So of course, their strong students are gonna take it and their students who maybe didn't have the best year in the course aren't gonna take it. So their scores will naturally be inflated by that. And I don't know each school's policy. But again, and we have this policy of we want everybody who is up for the challenge to be able to do it. And not every school is able to offer that for different reasons.
And we have so many kids taking multiple exams.
Right.
Where other schools could have kids just take, taking one AP course, which is great, but they only have to, they get a three on that one versus a kid taking two or three and gets a two on one of the three, which just throws off, it can throw off the average too.
Yeah, exactly. All right, and then just a quick note about our Spanish immersion students. We had fourteen Spanish immersion students for the class of twenty twenty-three. They had an average GPA of four point three two, which is higher than the overall class average of three point eight six. The ninety-three percent of them indicated that they were going to attend a four-year college compared to eighty-six percent of the entire graduating class. And their SAT scores for both evidence-based reading and math were higher than the, compared to the entire class. And the overall mean was sixty-nine points higher than the overall class mean. And all fourteen immersion students that took the AP Spanish language exam, all of them scored a three or above, which is good, they all passed after twelve years of Spanish immersion. So yeah, just some summary observations. We're, I think, like you said, there's so much to be proud of, I think, in this district with how hard our kids work, how hard our teachers work, how awesome families are in supporting schools and supporting their kids as they go through school. And the outcomes are awesome, I think, for so many of our kids. They're moving on to higher education in large numbers. And if, if it isn't higher education, of course, there are other ways to be successful in life too. And so kids are moving on to various different opportunities after high school. And when we survey the class at the end of the year before they left, seventy-eight point three said that they were admitted to one of their top three top-choice schools. Sixty-two percent said financial aid package was a factor in deciding where they ended up going. And this was higher than the previous class and I feel like it gets higher every year. And over, overall satisfaction with post-high school plan, an average of three point nine out of five. We were glad to see that the SAT participation seems to be, you know, more or less moving back to close to pre-pandemic levels. Colleges are for the most part remaining test optional, but there are some that are going back to requiring the SAT. So it'll just kind of be interesting to see how that continues to shape this landscape of the next few years. this landscape in the next few years. Um, yeah, we just, we very much can appreciate the support that we receive from Milis Counseling Services. You know, I talked about a lot of those things that we've done throughout the year. Um, and I know just with the budget, you know, the override conversation on the table as well, that there is a high school counselor, um, an adjustment counselor. Our bridge program is, is on the line. And it's hard to imagine being able to support students the way we do without the bridge program. Um, that program's been absolutely incredible for our school in allowing us to support student mental health and also making it so that the school counselors can focus on things in addition to mental health. We can help with, you know, academics and college and all of this stuff. Um, so we very much appreciate that the town and school committee and everyone has been very supportive of the school counseling services at Milis High School. That's it.
Anybody have any questions? Are you seeing, like, I'm just curious, with a slightly lower amount of kids saying they got into the top three choices, are you seeing more schools being a little bit more random on who gets in and who doesn't?
Yes. Yeah, it's really hard on, it's really hard to predict, which makes sense because they do have that smaller, you know, that, that one less piece of information without the SAT scores. Um, and I think that the competitive schools are gonna go back to requiring SAT scores. That's starting to happen. Uh, but yes, it's just very unpredictable. Definitely is happening in both directions in terms of their kids getting in um, to schools that we wouldn't necessarily expect if they were requiring SAT schools, SAT scores. But yes, it is very unpredictable now.
When you said, um, the, the access to the AP courses, like, is that, so there's the prerequisites or whatnot or not? Like, I mean, it sounds great. I love that, like, kid wants to take, I mean, the way it sounded, I mean, it's like, if somebody wants to, wants to challenge themselves, then it's pretty, it's, they're pretty much encouraged to do that, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, you know, to, to what extent that it makes sense.
Oh, yeah, of course.
And we know that they can be successful and supported with the right amount of support, they're gonna do well. Um, yeah, more or less. Like, we have sort of guidelines to help them figure out, like, you know, if you got a D in a CP one level class this year, maybe another year, you know, maybe take an honors level class before you jump into AP. Um, so, yeah, it's not a total free-for-all, but
Sure. Oh, yeah, sure.
but yes, we definitely encourage.
I think one of the things that helps is the summer work, that most classes require summer work.
Yeah.
Um, kids, you know, kids figure out, okay, they mean business.
Right.
Yeah, it gets rid of a little bit of the, yeah.
Select, after doing some summer work or attempting to do some summer work or letting summer work go, they decide maybe it's not for me at this time.
Right.
But it is, it is something that, um, you know, it's kind of a philosophy of the district to, you know, if we have space and if a kid's willing to do it, we're willing to, you know, to let that, that student try. And sometimes it winds up, like Riley said, with a kid getting a two, but the kid had the experience of taking college-level class.
Right.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, right, and it is, it's one four-hour test at the end of the year that, you know, some people would look at as success or not success, but sometimes they are killing it all year long. You know, they're, and they actually are able to be very successful in the class, even if at the end of the year, that four-hour test isn't something that they necessarily are awesome at.
The other thing is, they take, you know, I've said to people, like, you take the AP course, the AP course, and you do relatively well throughout the year, that's on your transcript. Like, colleges, if that's the path you're gonna go, colleges are gonna see that you took an AP course or two. Whether you get three or four, who cares?
They actually value the grade in the class more than they do the exam score.
So it's, you know.
And it doesn't, and like, a B in an AP class is way better than an A. And like, I mean, like, just the, you know, the, the, yeah, no, that's, I think it's fantastic. I mean, and the scores being lower, I mean, more kids are taking the test, so that's, that makes, it makes a lot of sense.
These kids have been through it these past few years.
Right.
And, yeah, there's, I think the scores being what they are, which is overall, they're doing awesome.
They're good, yeah.
This class of 2023 speaks to the resilience of these kids and like, how well this district did throughout the pandemic, that there wasn't, for the class of 2023, there wasn't a major loss in terms of what's reflected on these tests.
And I also, you know, for the individual students and families, when, uh, if a college is accepting the AP score and you don't have to take a prerequisite class because of what you done in high school, or even better, if the college accepts the credit and, you know, you save money on tuition.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But I also want, there's a, there's a line, you don't want kids too enmeshed because it's heavy-duty stuff. So we don't encourage kids to take five AP.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Riley.
And I'd like to thank Riley and Nicole and, and Erin Sullivan and Olivia Zatoli for all their work. And, you know, particularly for tonight's presentation, it was, you know, a lot of the work done by Riley and, you know, Nicole in the, in the guidance suite. Because obviously, a lot of work went into the report, but the report is just a very small fraction of, of the work that's done there and the many different things that happened in those offices. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teera. All right, why don't we jump up to action items? Consideration to approve the April ninth meeting.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the April ninth meeting minutes.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consideration to approve proposed fee changes for transportation.
Round two.
Excellent.
So you have a memo in your packet. And what I tried to do is lead you back through it. And I started off with the weather and what we currently charge. And I did go back through the history as well. And, which I had to remind myself, that last year, we also increased the fee seven and a half percent. And part of the reason we did this last year is because we were trying to address the same issue, which is an ongoing issue with transportation. And that is, it's an extremely expensive proposition. But what we have is we have two competing needs. We have the need that we have in the sense of not just funding drivers, but for example, as we discussed last time, we have, for example, the need right now to probably replace at, for, for sure, one van. And really, when you get right down to it, at least three vans that normally we would have replaced out of the revolving fund, but we don't really have the funds to do that. But the competing need is that we want to get kids to school. I mean, that's the overwhelming interest here. We want to get kids to school. We can't make it so outrageous that the transportation is unaffordable. So where's the mix here? And, and that's what we tried to look at here as we were trying to come up with a proposal that continues to try and keep the revolving fund moving forward, but doesn't, you know, sacrifice too much in doing so. And so, again, um, what's proposed is a five percent for FY25 and then three percent for each of the four years following, again, with annual reviews. What I did do, and I believe it was a question that was raised last time, is we went back and we looked at the number of single-child families that participate and then two or more. And so you can see the numbers here are one seventy-seven single-child situations and one hundred and seventy-three two or more. And if there were no other types of reductions, that would generate, based on the proposal, two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. But that is not really accurate. Because what happens is we have situations where we have children who get the fee waived because they are either on free or reduced meals. They are on SNAP. They have a distance exclusion because if a child lives a certain distance away, they are eligible for free transportation through grade six. So based on the past history, and we never know until we get signups, but basically, I can look at that number and I can say, it's probably gonna go down from that number forty to fifty percent. So in reality, the revenue that's gonna be generated here is somewhere between one hundred and eleven thousand dollars. I would consider that probably on the low side. Um, possibly as much as one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars on the high side. And if it's a little bit more than that, then, you know, I would consider that, you know, very optimistic. But I think those are reasonable estimates as far as the revenue that would be generated by this proposal. I don't feel like doing another seven and a half percent increase this year is something we really can do. I mean, we asked for it last year. I think the community and the parents were responsive to that and understood that. I think five percent is as far as I felt that I could propose to you tonight.
Terry, what would be the impact if we, what would be the impact if we put the twenty-five down to three from five?
If we go, if you're talking about I wonder if I have that spreadsheet up because it's linked. I'm going to say it's gonna be roughly and maybe something that I wouldn't have up tonight when I wanted it ready for you. That's it, because those tables are linked. But let me, just looking at the table, I would say that it's gonna probably, the number's gonna go down somewhere. First child's probably gonna be somewhere around three oh seven. It's a guesstimate.
I'm only asking, given that we're asking all the residents to increase their property taxes by
Yeah. No, I, I hear you.
A decent amount that we try and not hit everybody from every angle.
Let me try.
Hey, I guess, I guess the question is less about what the price would be as much as it, how would it impact our ability to provide the service?
We're gonna provide the service one way or another.
I just, I just did a quick, um, so if with the five percent, if, if we're at five seventy-five now on the first option for, um, currently, then a three percent would be five ninety-two twenty-five instead of six oh four.
Twelve dollars a month. Times ten months, one hundred and twenty. Times, you do a hundred and twenty times one hundred and seventy-five.
Well, that's twelve dollars for the year, right?
That's for the year.
Oh, it's for the year?
Yeah.
That's for the year. These are, these are, yeah, I should, I apologize. I should explain, this is an annual.
Right, so twelve dollars times one hundred and seventy-five, which is roughly fifty percent of the, it's just a blend of
Five, four, seven, five, cut out the twenty-one hundred dollars.
Okay. So the revenue differential would be twenty-one hundred dollars. I would suggest we do it at three instead of five if the only, the delta on that's twenty-one hundred dollars for the district.
We can certainly do that. And that would be somewhat consistent with the other fees if you had done.
Right, and then we're at least, especially since we just did seven and a half last year, we now just keep it at something, you know, inflationary, three percent. It's not the difference between a salary or a bus or anything, it's just a
No, I think that makes sense.
So then the other question would be, do we want to, I mean, we can vote this schedule to, through 2029? It doesn't mean that it can't be changed.
Yeah, you're gonna hold the, all of your fee schedules the way I set them up is you gotta get a review annually. So this is gonna set something in place. And basically, what would happen is next year, we'd come forward to you with all the fee schedules. We would review them for you. If you wanted to do nothing, then they'll be in place. If you want to change something, you'd absolutely have that power to do so. And I just changed, I just did change the source spreadsheet. So I think it might be showing up on your memo as far as what the rates would be.
And I think the memo is a PDF.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, the memo is a PDF?
Yeah.
Okay, well, the rates I have now, um, I don't think I changed on mine either. The rates I have on the spreadsheet, let's put it that way, let's go to the spreadsheet. At three percent, the first year would be, three oh nine would be for the first child. The second child would be two eighty-three, and family cap would be five ninety-two. And then for the fifty-fifty, it would be three forty-six, three eleven, and six fifty-seven.
So I would entertain a motion as Terry wrote it, except amended it from being as presented to be three percent increase for all years?
So moved.
It's been moved? It's exacted. All in favor?
Aye. Cheated on that one.
All good.
And while Terry's up there, um, Robin mentioned last meeting about, a question about the pre-K and kindergarten and extended day fees. We did take care of those in January, but, um, there was a question about the sliding scale and how many kids actually used it. We said we would get back to on that. My apologies, we didn't. So I have that information now. This year, we have eighteen kindergarten families or students who utilize the, the sliding scale. And that's about average for the last five years. We've averaged eighteen point eight, um, families that, that are eligible for the sliding scale. So the sliding scale we had, we kind of tabled it. So I don't know, you know, if there are any questions on that or if you, you know, entertain a motion to approve that for FY25.
Why don't we hold that to the next meeting? And then we can approve, we can review that.
Sure, yeah. That was the, we had that at the January meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, that thing got a little hectic after January. All right, next item is consideration to renew this Signet Basic Security and AV Agreement.
Yes, so the new Clyde Brown Yes, so the new Clyde Brown School is getting a little older. And this is one of the indications that it is getting a little older in that some of the contracts that were let when the building was built are now coming around for their first renewal. This particular one is for the video components of not just the security, but as Bob put in his memo, the TVs, the, I mean, I think if you think about anything related to audiovisual in the building.
All the panels.
All the panels, really the bulk of it. That's what is being renewed here. We have a proposal for an annual renewal in the amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. It is an annual renewal. It is not a three-year contract, we need to make that clear. Now, I would also remind the committee that we have dramatically more cameras, video, security involved with the Clyde Brown School than we had in the old school and even in this building here. And that's one of the reasons that we're paying a lot. The question was raised to me by one of our administrators, and it was, it was an excellent question. You know, can we do this for cheaper? And I would say probably can eventually. But that eventually means that this, this equipment is proprietary equipment. So the eventually is that when these cameras get to the end of life, where we're going to be looking at a replacement, then it's a type of situation where we would be going out to bid again. We would be looking at, obviously, a new system. And then part of the bid process of looking at a new system would be looking at the maintenance agreement for that new system, whatever that might be, whether it be continuing with Signet or something else that's out there. And there certainly are other options out there. But for the moment, this is the system that you have. It's in good working order. There's no complaints about it whatsoever.
State of the art.
It's state of the art. It remains state of the art, you know. Was it four or five years now? So, which says something right there. And, you know, there are no complaints. So we would recommend that you approve the renewal of the contract.
Mr. Chair. I make a motion to approve the renewal of the Signet Basic Security and AV Agreement as presented.
Seconded. Moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
All right, next is MSBA update.
Please come to the community forum tomorrow night, seven o'clock. We'll be right back here. No, but, so the project is in the design conception, conceptual design phase. And tomorrow night, actually, is going to have boards with the, the number of designs that have been moved forward to the next part of the process. So the community will have an opportunity to hear about the designs, how the designers arrived at them through educational planning and visioning. And then attendees at the session will, it gets a little interactive at the end where attendees will be able to sort of mark items that they like and rate them a bit. So they're, they give their opinion on some of the concepts. So still very, very early in the process. But this, this, I think, was one of the most successful forums that we ran when we did Clyde Brown. So hopefully, there'll be a lot of attendance tomorrow night. When people watch this meeting next week, they'll say, wow, I should have gone.
All right, next, the FY25 budget update is all about the override. So it's, the vote is town meeting on May seventh, and then the election, the ballot is May thirteenth. So the article at town meeting will have to pass, and then the override will have to pass at the ballot. Both have to pass in order for the budget, the increased budget to pass. To say thank you to the, you know, the teachers' union has put a lot of effort in organization and communication out, which has been extremely helpful. So I want to recognize their efforts in getting the word out as best we can, so. More to come. Bob, do you have anything to superintend?
Just, just some correspondence from the Accept Collaborative, which is the other collaborative we belong to. They just sent over on Monday their annual report. So that's included in the packet. You may recall, a couple of meetings ago, we had the tech annual report. So this is the same type of report.
Only question that I had, for the committee, actually. So we're scheduled to meet May seventh, which is town meeting. So we're scheduled for town meeting, and then we're not posted till the twenty-first. I can't be here on the twenty-first. Would people be available on the fourteenth?
I can't be here on the twenty-first either, so I prefer the fourteenth.
I can do the fourteenth.
And there's actually a second reason for moving it to the fourteenth because then it would be the night after the election. And either way.
Yeah, we have work to do, yeah.
Yep. So, all right, so if we can post to the fourteenth.
Yep.
And actually, we can do reorganization on that night, too. All right, all right. So we got no executive session. Good.
Want you to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.
See you tomorrow night.